The result of not having an agreement over these years is that the people in the city of Barstown have paid more than they should for dispatch services. And the longer the county can do that, the longer they can keep us from having an agreement, the longer we'll pay more than our share. And that was, again, going back to the letter that was written to the fiscal court in September of 2014, which said that it was unfair to take a county-wide effort, pay for it and not pay for it with all county funds. Because county funds are generated from people in the county and in the city. All of us in Barstown are Nelson County taxpayers. So, February 2nd, fiscal court discussed funding options for 911. He said that he didn't want to discuss the city's proposal, but would like to talk to the mayor the next week. Proposed a landline fee, be replaced with fees on property taxes or on utilities based on current revenues. The city would still pay a second time from its general fund, but instead of having the money come from landline fees, they would come from utilities, which theoretically would grow and the landline fees are being reduced. That was on February 2nd. Then on February 10th, the mayor asked the Kentucky State Police for a quote-on dispatch services. And we agreed, those of us around City Hall agreed, that we would not publicize the fact that we were asking the Kentucky State Police for a quote-on dispatch services because as soon as we did, that the judge would start lobbying the city council and the public against such a move. Which we saw in the occupational tax, where he came to the council and argued against it. We saw it in our proposal to annex, which the judge was instrumental in helping us to decide against it. So, what we're looking for are options to an interlocal agreement and a dispatch service that we've been working since September of 2014 to renegotiate. We're unsuccessful, we've given a proposal, it had been rejected. We needed some other options. Because come September of 2016, we're not going to have an interlocal agreement. In fact, we don't even have one now, we just have a memorandum of understanding that extended it for a year. And we're right in the middle of the budget time. We don't have until September to decide what we're going to do about dispatch, because we have to provide for it in the budget, which as we all know is right on us. So, April 8th, 2016, the city and the county received the 2016-2017 budget from the dispatch, Nelson County Dispatch. And in that proposed budget, the city contribution was $251,918. Now, that budget had a very strange extra column, which has kind of kept us, made us scratch our heads. And it had a separate column off to the side that said, it was labeled "Reduction of City Support $24,000." This was the $24,000 that the city had to pay when the dispatch service unilaterally said they wouldn't dispatch our after-hours utilities. Well, the reduction of $24,000 was set off to the side, but it wasn't reflected in the budget itself. So, the budget itself said $251,000. And there was a note off to the side that it was, but the reduction of $24,000 wasn't in that $251. And it wasn't in the expenses, the expenses weren't reduced by $24,000. And the judge had already said that he wasn't going to increase the county expenditures by $24,000 last year. Presumably, he wouldn't do it this year. And it didn't show any increase of $24,000 put on the county's part of the budget. So, there was no way that that $24,000 reduction in the city's contribution could be incorporated into the expense and revenue of the line next to it without changing the 60-40% split between the city and county. So, April 29th, the Standard reported it, and I only know this because the Standard reported it, that Judge Watts sent an email to the city council, not to the mayor, certainly not to me, stating that the city would only have to pay $170,000 for our share of dispatch. Well, he'd just got an email from the dispatch board, an official budget proposal from the dispatch, that showed $251,000 coming from the city of Barstown. Yet he sends a little email to the city council saying, "Oh, you're only going to have to pay $170,000." Well, how can that be? How can he say that we're only going to pay $170,000 when he just got an email a few days before that said that we were going to pay $251,000? It was convenient for the county to show that the city only had to pay $170,000, because it made it sound like, hey, why go with the state police for $157,000 when we're only going to charge you? Right? Not we, because it's not the county that's charging the $170,000 or $251,000, it's the dispatch board, set up by an interlocal agreement, that we have so little to say about, that the judge speaks for them. So, he says, "Oh, you're only going to have to pay $170,000." Well, I don't know whether that, could that be anything except for intentional, to say one thing when he knew something else? I don't know, and I won't speculate. But, that almost brought us up to date, that brought us up to 4:00 today. And I love this, I know, he doesn't want me around because I might interfere, but the 4:00 today, did you all see your, have you looked at your emails today? 4:00, right before this meeting, right before we talked about it. The 11th hour and the 59th minute, we get a letter from the judge. Following up on our discussions regarding 911 service revenue, fiscal court is in general agreement. Now, the fiscal court didn't vote. But the judge says they're in agreement, and I take his word for it, to add $2 to the bill of all solid waste bills, garbage bills in the county. Since Barstown provides this service in the city limits, we respectfully request that the city council of Barstown consider adding this fee to your monthly garbage bill for 911 service. The total of revenue generated from this additional fee is equivalent to the previous amount collected from the landline telephones. So, you'll find a proposal that will still require the city and county's participation. And then on the back is a 911 proposal with some numbers. Who can pass these out for me? And it just so happened that I had a little spreadsheet from when we were going to do this, it was supposed to do it through the electric bill. And since we're on the subject, I want to go through with the judge's numbers. The revenue needed for dispatch, $965,000, that's down from $1 million in last year's proposed budget. But it's probably about right, since they've reduced some of the expenses. Revenue from cell phones, which is what we get through the state, is $173,000. The projected revenue from garbage bills countywide, everybody in the county is $406,000. And the revenue shortage is $385,000. And so, he still wants to have that divided 60-40 between the county and the city. Now, he already knows, because we sent him a letter, the city council sent him a letter in 2014, that the city's position, or at least that council and that mayor's position at the time was, that it's unfair for the city to pay our county taxes for a county-wide service and then pay an extra 40% on top of that. So, if you look through, and then, so if you take those numbers, there are, and you divide the amount of the $24 a year, $2 a month, that he's going to collect for 911 services on the garbage bills, that comes out to $16,932 customers. Sounds about right to the county. The city has 5,555 customers, or 34%, and that's about right, we're about 30% of the population, and by all the different ways you look at the city, we're about, somewhere around a third. So, that looks like, and then, from that, he deduces that the amount, the city's 40% would be $154,000 a year. Just a little bit better than the state police $157,000. That's just a coincidence, I'm sure. I may really think it is a coincidence. So, but, and that doesn't sound too bad, $154,000 the cities would pay. Until you look at the fact that the city garbage customers are going to pay $138,000. The city taxpayers are paying a third of the county's 60%, $69,422. And then on top of that, we're going to pay the city's 40% of $154,000. City residents are going to pay $213,000 of that. And the county customers, and there's two-thirds more, they represent two-thirds of the whole, are going to pay $172,000. So, the per customer rate, it's 24 in the county, because that's all they're paying. But we're paying the 24, plus the, our one-third of the county's tax, plus the city's 40%. And so, we're paying all of them, so we're paying $213,142. So, I wanted to go through this, just because we got it at the last minute, and I just did this since 4:00. So, my, these numbers may not be 100% right, I'll check them again tomorrow, but it's telling that, once again, the county is depending on the city taxpayers paying more than their share in order to keep them raising the taxes any more than they have to in the county. And so, that's kind of a, a little bit of a recap of how we got to where we are with dispatch. And, but we still have to make a decision about where to go from here. And one of the things I wanted to do was provide some options, because it looked like nothing was going to happen. And of course, the more nothing happens, the more we keep paying what we've been paying, which is not fair. And so, there are two possibilities. One of them is the state police to do the dispatching. That would cost us $157,000 a year, and it would be, it would operate very similar to the way it's being operated here. The only difference is that we'd be talking to different dispatchers. Another option would be to do the dispatch ourselves. And I didn't think that was very realistic, but we were able to get some quotes from RCS about how much that would cost. It costs about $600,000 just to set it up. We then have to hire probably nine people, nine dispatchers, and that, I think would pretty quickly get to be prohibitively expensive. So, those are our options. But we do need to do something soon, because budget time is upon us, we've got, you know, we have a little time, we have until the end of June to actually pass a budget. But this is a, something that's unlike other parts of the budget, where we can just say, okay, we're going to cut that, or we're going to add some money here and there. This is more than just that budget operation, we also have to enter an agreement with someone to provide this service for next year. So, it's my recommendation.
I'm going to make a recommendation to the council. Larry, you kind of confused me with someone who was numb with some things. And we've been down this road before, trying to save dollars, and I do not want to go down this road again, trying to save dollars. And I do not want to separate. I'm going to make a recommendation to the council, that we, council members, meet with judge and the mayor, and sit down, round table discuss, and see if we can earn this out. Instead of just few, trying to make a decision for this whole community, and like I indicated in the past, we have sat down together, and we came up with a very positive decision. So, I'm a recommendation to the council, that we sit down with the mayor and the judge, and see if we can work this out. And I indicated, I do not want to separate. We built it local here in Barstown, all aspects. And I do not want to move, I mean, for our state police, and I have indicated at the safety committee, I don't want my life jeopardized, and nobody's life in this city's life jeopardized because some signal malfunctioned. And I think we should keep it local. That's my recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman Lydia. Councilman, is there a single right ahead, sir?
Larry, you mentioned the $170,000 that was offered, whatever date, whatever sentence. But with this paper here, am I understanding this, that it's $154, plus change?
Well, $154, has that changed since this? Yeah, I think, I think it, I don't know what, and wouldn't presume to guess what the judge was thinking when he said $170,000, but the $154,000 he has documented and shown. So, I think it's like a new proposal, it's something different. I don't think they're related at all.
Question, as it lies at KSP, how many fire departments do they dispatch for, and how many police departments do they dispatch?
You know, I don't know. Throughout the state, they dispatch for, they dispatch a lot. And I was over there the other day, and a lot of the dispatchers have, they move around, and they move their dispatchers around in regions. And so, a lot of them did have experience with fire. Well, not as much with EMS, because EMS would just be a transfer. So, the way that would work is that someone calls in, they answer the phone, "911, what's your emergency?" They say, "Got a heart attack victim in here." They say, "Hold," they press a button, that call goes immediately to Nelson County Dispatch within a second or two. They stay on the line while they're transferring that, it's called a monitored transfer, I think, or something like that. They stay on the line, and while that, while that person's giving the information to Nelson County Dispatch, to dispatch to the ambulance, the KSP would be sending that same signal to the fire department. So, that's how that would work. And yes, they do have the experience, their dispatchers do.
How many dedicated dispatchers would they have for just our community here?
They would have three dispatchers on duty at all time, and that's based on a formula that the state police have, as to how many dispatchers they need to have to cover X number of calls per year.
And that would be just for our area?
They wouldn't have a dispatcher just for our area, they would have, we would be put into a mix of dispatches for the state police, so they would add dispatchers in order to accommodate our volume. It really wouldn't make any sense to have a totally separate group of the dispatchers just for Barstown, because they would be sitting around not doing anything. So, what, if you have, say, if we have a total, say, 15,000 calls a year, about what we have, 13,000 even, with our police and fire, then they might add one, go from two dispatchers to three, or three to four. So, that they would all be interspersed with all those calls. One thing I think we could rely on is that we wouldn't have the current situation where a police officer calls dispatch and is told to stand by while they dispatch someone else.
I made a recommendation on the floor, there is a comment, it's input from the council on what I indicated, I have a recommendation on the floor.
Tracy, Tracy was, were you, did you ever hand up one to say something?
No, I mean, as far as the dispatch numbers go, it's not in the budget yet, because when I looked at Debbie's budget that she gave to the mayor and the judge, I had a couple questions about the revenue, and I did see that the 24 was sitting off to the side. And then when I took the expenses, took out the revenue, other than the support, our numbers slightly differed, and then she explained to me that she did not take out the $24,000, and that she would have to, or have to get her budget admitted in the dispatch board, and then we'd get back to us. So, if that's the case, then our portion would be around $234,000.
Then where would that $24,000 come from?
From the $258 that she originally gave to us.
But then they would have to either reduce the expenditures or get that money from the county, right?
Right, that's what she planned on doing.
Get it from the county?
No, she said she would either get it from the county or reduce the expenses.
Okay.
If Francis answered your question, my experience, the fewer people that are involved in negotiation and discussion, the better. I think it would be very cumbersome for the entire fiscal court and the entire city council to be sitting around trying to negotiate, so I'm not a fan of that.
Give me some numbers, when you said few, I mean, is it?
I would recommend less than a quorum, so that you don't have open meetings law ramifications.
So, you can have three council members, right?
No.
Three council members, not a quorum, four, I suppose, is a quorum, right?
It's one more than what it takes to actually make a vote.
Four is a quorum.
Four of a quorum, I mean, three council.
Like a committee, like your own committee.
Right, but three council members, is not considered a quorum, right? Is that a meeting?
Yeah, just like a, yeah, just like a committee. Now, it's, you don't have quorum, it's not a council meeting, but it's an open meeting, it would still be an open meeting. I'm sorry, I misspoke when I said open meeting, it wouldn't be, it would be an open meeting, but it wouldn't be a council meeting that you'd have to advertise.
I have a problem with what you indicated, Fred, if we can add some more input.
I think the people who are involved in negotiations and discussions on topics should be experts on it. I am not an expert on 911 dispatch.
That's what I'm talking about, we need someone with knowledge, because this is a very major decision, and I indicated I do not want to separate.
Mayor, I have a question. So, what are the chances of us using a mediator? I'm not saying an arbitrator, because in arbitrating, what you decided, binding, but someone like Fred mentioned, someone who is more learned than we are.
Right.
And could sit down and have a meeting under mines, and then just see if we can get this worked out.
I know, because some of us, we do not have the knowledge, we use our opinion, and sometime our opinion is wrong, and it leads us down the wrong road, and I do not want to go down the wrong road.
Well, first off, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
First off, a mediator looks to me like would come in, wants some, from what I understand Larry has said here, there's already some changes in numbers and in the way this thing operates. So, it looks like to me that we need to get back with the judge and magistrate, or however, maybe get two or three magistrates, and the judge, however it would be legal, and try a discussion on it. And if you can't come, you come to an impasse, then you've got to a mediator, or go use that way.
I agree with you, Bobby.
You think that's a great idea? Are you still talking?
I took your stand, didn't mean to.
Larry, I have a question, I'm trying to write stuff down, and did you say that we received an email on April 29th from Judge Watts?
It was reported in the paper.
We did not receive an email.
I was just looking, because I was like, what information did I miss?
Oh, no.
I looked under Greta's name, and I looked under Judge Watts, but I didn't see anything. Now, I know today we received the email about what you just read at 2:42 PM, but I didn't receive anything else.
Actually, I heard that from the newspaper, the newspaper talking to Randy, and said, "How did you know that the council got this email?" And then I saw it in the paper, so I said, "It's bad." So, I was just told that it might not be true.
Okay. So, I agree with you, Bobby.
It's in the paper whether I got the email or not.
I don't think I got it.
Not either.
Bobby, rolling, I mean, what else?
I had a couple of questions, just general questions. How many fire departments uses the KSP for dispatch? Do you know that?
I don't know, but I can certainly find that out easy enough, I can find that out and send it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
And one more, does the KSP have the equipment to set off the weather sign, or can Barstown set it off, I mean, set them off if someone is physically at their fire station?
I feel like that can be arranged, that can be, but we're not going to find out.
One more, sorry.
I think we need to stay local.
Okay, I mean, Francis, I'm sorry. All right. Okay, um, let's see. If, if KSP takes 911 calls from Barstown, will Barstown Fire be dispatched before KSP calls Nelson County for an EMS call?
It'll be simultaneous.
Okay, all right. And will KSP accept emails from the county clerk's office to enter the protection orders? And how will the officer receive the original to serve?
I'm sorry, did you repeat that?
Will KSP accept emails from the county clerk's office to enter the protection orders? And how will the officer receive their original to serve?
Yes, and again, by email.
By email? Via email? Okay, all right. Um, let's see. Do any of our handheld or mobile radios have to be replaced?
No, no, they would have to be, they'd have to be adjusted, but the frequencies would probably have to be changed.
Yeah, I just have two thoughts. First, Larry, I'd like to have some time to look at these numbers Larry gave us, just kind of get that straight in my mind. And then as far as budgeting, what we could do if we deemed it, one option is to go ahead and put in the budget the higher of the two numbers, so we can get the budget, and then we would have to September, it gives us a little more time to actually make our decision, and we could always reduce the budget. That's an option, if we want to give ourselves some time to make the decision on what to do, just budget for the higher number.
Sure.
And then reduce it, so that's something we can just think about.
That's a good suggestion.
We could amend.
Amend it down.
Okay.
Good thinking.
If I can, the concern that I would have, at least from the legal part of this, would be, and the concern I had when the finances were mixed. The council controls purse strings of the city, they are the only people that are authorized to spend, you know, the budget, spend the money for the city of Barstown. When there was little, when the city of Barstown was not an equal or majority member of that board, and your all's commitment was to 40%, that's a flexible number. If the board voted to increase or do spend $100,000 on something, and city of Barstown, city council couldn't override that, I guess they could, you could amend the budget. the budget, they'd have to probably amend the budget. But that's been my, my concern in the past, is that that's not a finite number, forty percent. Anybody here in this room, I don't think anybody in this room would take a deal where I said, we're gonna cooperate, we're gonna enter into business together, I've got control of what we're gonna spend, but you pay forty percent. Because if I have control, and you pay forty percent, you don't know what you're gonna end up paying. I think that if the negotiations go forward, that the city of Barstown, my recommendation would be, you could do something different, but my recommendation would be that it be a finite number, that your contribution be so many thousands of dollars. If there's an additional amount requested, that it come before, back before the council, through your all's approval.
And would that be a number that's in our budget, though?
Yes.
So that would be a finite number?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It would be a finite number, but understand, in the past, as Larry pointed out, that finite number was not so finite. It was, it was, it was a moving target. And before there's a commitment to, to expend more funds, you all should be the ones committing to expend more funds. And so I think, and then, there's the issue of the representation, obviously, you know, we've talked about bylaws here before. When the dispatch board can amend its own bylaws, and in its bylaws, it talks about who could serve on the board, that's problematic. The inter-local agreement should specify the makeup of the board, and whatever you all serve decide is fair on that, is what it should be, but I think it should be in the inter-local agreement, not in the bylaws. That's extraordinary, for the makeup of the board, to be, you know, to be in the control of the board itself. So those would be my two things. As part of the negotiations, if you all are negotiating, those would be two things that I would think you'd want to start, you know, or at least end discussions with.
I think if you remember, Trace, if you recall, I don't know if you can, but I think last year in dispatch, they had, we had budget amendments to dispatch on, I think, two, maybe three occasions, that they had come back and asked for more, more money, so that's something that we'd have to look at, that, have a fixed price, if we do this, where we can't be paying for a tower that is out of the county, that doesn't benefit the city, but it benefits the county, so I think that was another, Larry, you can call that, they borrowed seven hundred thousand or something?
It was four hundred, one thousand, that were, are on, by the dispatch board, from the county, without going through the budget process, or being approved by the city, and that was, somewhere I've got what all that was for. It wasn't at one time, it was, it was multiple requests for what they called a line of credit. It's interesting, it was a line of credit offered from the county, and, and it was spent not by the dispatch board, but by the county itself. But then obligated the city to pay it back, without going through the budget.
If I could move on, I'd like to go down to this administrative finance question of the proposed budget review FY 2016-17. Tracy?
I have two minutes. Sorry, I was wondering. So, the budget was given to you all. I did give a memo that just kind of pointed out some capital projects that we were doing in each department, that were added in the warrant. And then also, at the bottom, where it said that we're, two departments are looking to add additional employees. One is for a groundskeeper, the other one is a water plant training. And also, in the raises, as far as that goes, we did three percent, four percent. Three percent were for those making under twenty dollars, I'm sorry, three percent was for those making over twenty dollars, and four percent for making those under twenty.
Thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome. Just tell me what you want.
You'll be around at your office starting tomorrow.
Great.
I suggest get your committees together, and meet, and see where we go.
I do, then, I have one last thing. All right. On the ABC ruling through Senate Bill 11, there's a situation that's going to arise January of 2017, in which the state has mandated that local liquor licenses synchronize with the expiration dates of the state. State expiration dates are two dates for the county of Nelson, which is April 30th and August 31st. I have fifteen licenses that will need to synchronize with the 8/31 date, and the remaining sixty-five with the April 30th expiration date. And that's, again, mandated as of January 1st, 2017. So I put before you an opportunity to show what the prorated amounts will be in regard to these liquor licenses. If come June, when I send out renewal notices, I would only renew until April, for all of those that are not with a blue dot beside them, or a blue, a blue space. And then prorate a year plus two months in June, for those that all, that have the blue space beside them. And that way, in 2017, when renewal dates come up again in April, and again in August, everything will be saved. But that means an amendment to the budget, I mean, amendment to the ordinance, and also an opportunity to reach out to each and every one of the licensees, to explain the situation with a letter, with the renewal notice. So I need to make sure that this is okay with you all. To ask for more money of some, and less money of others.
Because where does that date, probably the new, the new state law?
Yes, Senate Bill 11. Yes. There's also gonna be an opportunity to add two more licenses on a, on a city level, but that won't happen until 2017, so I won't worry about bringing that to you all until now.
It's okay with me.
They said this is going to affect the fees?
The renewal, the actual license fees, yes. The first, the first one says the amount owed shows what they renew each and every year, but to prorate it to the April date, they, I would only charge them the next call. And then those with the blue face beside the name, that's the ones that we, that will expire in August, and so they will be charged a year plus two months in June.
Because ours currently expire with a fiscal year.
With our fiscal year.
And we're having to split them to sync with the state.
Right.
One's a little shorter, one's a little longer.
Right.
But they won't pay anymore if it's upgraded.
It'll be prorated.
And they can complain with the state.
Right. We all don't complain with us, but it'll be a state situation.
You wanna go back to the travel policies? Let's go back to the council updates. Go to number one, A, the travel policy education reimbursement for our council.
We'll talk about it a little bit. Yeah, I just like, we don't have a lot of time to talk about it, but, we've talked about this before, of having a policy for our travel, and there were some examples on our iPad, of what other people have done. I guess my, my only thoughts on that are, I, these are like twenty-something pages of policies, and they, I think we could make something very, very simple, much, much simpler. And have some, fix a man in our budget for us to travel, we talked about that, have a policy, and I think, you know, the part of the travel policy is always, you want people to spend the money best they can, and stay in the cheapest place, and, so there's usually a lot of approvals and stuff like that. I would suggest, think about this, as part of our policy, when we put this in place, is that part of the policy would be that any approved expense reports would be published in the next minutes of the next, of the next public meeting. I think that would keep people, that let the public know where we're staying, and I think that'd keep us all pretty straight. It would, it would keep it simple. So I'm gonna propose, when we get to, we take some of this information we have, have something a little bit cleaner, what it covers, how we would do a travel policy, or how we do an expense report, who would approve it, and then publish it in the minutes of the next meeting, and so everybody can see what we've done, I think that'll just, that'd make things a lot cleaner. So that's just some general thoughts on that. Nothing specific.
At the next work session?
Yeah, we can do that, and I guess, since I bother that, I can look, Bobby, help me to put together some kind of policy.
You have a question?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll have a number before budget.
Oh, sure. Tell me what, that'd be part of all this discussion.
Okay.
When we get back, start talking about this.
Okay.
I will. We'll adjourn this meeting, and we'll get a five-minute break, until we're going to special meetings. Thank you.